And good afternoon, welcome to tonight's meeting of October 21st, 2019. We're going to begin tonight. Hello? Hello? Shh. We're going to begin tonight's meeting with a couple of proclamations. First proclamation we're going to begin is with Magic Moments Day. And I believe we have someone here for that to come forward. And Mr. Mayor, I'll let you handle the proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have with us, we have Tyler Vallier. It's French. I told her my Mississippi accent would not do her very well tonight, but she was kind enough to be here. Ironically, while she's signing in, I'll just simply say that today actually is Magic Moments Day. So I think Governor Ivey has declared today as that. So as I understand it, her staff is very, very thin, but we're fortunate to have Tyler with us tonight. And I'm just going to ask you to come around beside me and we'll read the proclamation. Whereas the emotional and general well-being of children ages four through 18 in the state of Alabama diagnosed with chronic life-threatening diseases is enhanced by services provided by Magic Moments. And whereas children in Alabama suffering with chronic life-threatening diseases are granted opportunities to live life without the trials of medical appointments and hospital stays for even for a moment. And whereas the Magic Moments staff sets an annual goal of fulfilling 100 children's requests throughout Alabama. And whereas Alabama residents will be aware of Magic Moments, the mission, and become involved as referring sources. And whereas the mission of Magic Moments is to grant non-medical moments to children ages four through 18 with chronic life-threatening illnesses in the state of Alabama, as well as continue a relationship beyond the moment. And whereas with awareness of services provided by Magic Moments, Alabama citizens in all 67 counties will come together to assist in the assurance that all qualifying children reap from deserving benefits and live their dreams magically and experience childhood normalcy to the fullest. So now therefore I, Scott McBrayer, Mayor of the City of Homewood, hereby proclaim October 21st, 2019 as Magic Moments Day in the City of Homewood and urge all citizens to celebrate the occasion. Tyler, thank you for all you and your organization do.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Check it and make sure. She's a great city clerk, but.
They're perfect. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you so much. It's a wonderful organization. And we have another one tonight, a proclamation for October as Physical Therapist Month. Wonder how this got on there, Mr. Wolverton? But, Mr. Mayor, I'll let you carry it away.
Counselor, would you like to come down and introduce who you've got with you? I know Robbie, Jill, and Carrie are here, all Homewood residents.
You want to try their names, go second name for me.
Y'all can come on around on this side. So this is a proclamation to honor physical therapists, Physical Therapist Month. Whereas there are 2,834 active physical therapists, 2,752 physical therapist assistants, over 430 physical therapy students, and over 250 physical therapist assistant students in the state of Alabama. Whereas the practice of physical therapy seeks to improve the health and quality of life of individuals in society. And whereas physical therapists are movement experts who optimize quality of life through prescribed exercise, hands-on care, and patient education. And whereas physical therapists provide an alternative to painful and expensive surgery in many cases. And whereas physical therapists manage or eliminate pain without medication and its side effects. And whereas physical therapists and physical therapist assistants empower people to become active participants in their own care, the state of Alabama allows physical therapists to treat patients without a physician's referral under varying circumstances referred to as direct access. And whereas the education and clinical experience required to become a licensed physical therapist provides the judgment needed to establish a diagnosis, determine if consultation with another healthcare provider is necessary, along with designing an individualized plan of care for the patient. So now therefore I, Scott McBrayer, Mayor of the City of Homewood, hereby proclaim October 2019 as Physical Therapist Month. And thank y'all so very much for all y'all do. Surely we got somebody taking a picture. Melody, you're being called on again.
I guess my classmate is this guy because this is nerve wracking.
Put your filter on where it makes me call.
I got a photo shop. I'll see if there's any other. The mayor's not too sure about my skills. My kids must be.
All good. Thank you all. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, we'll begin tonight's meeting and we'll begin with a call to order. And we'll start with our invocation. And I believe Mr. Jones is going to lead that followed by the pledge.
Will you pray with me? Dear Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for the rain. Also, we pray for those who have been impacted by the storms in Dallas and in Memphis earlier this morning. We pray that you will keep them, keep the families safe, and as the storm moves towards us, you'll keep us safe. Thank you for everything that you do for us. We thank you for the Magic Moments Organization, all the good that it does. We thank you also for the physical therapist and everything they do to help others. We thank the citizens of Homewood in helping each other as we go through life. We pray all these in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge. With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. And Melody will begin with roll call.
Yes, sir. Mr. Waltney?
Here.
Mr. Thames?
Here.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Here.
Mr. Wolverton?
Mr. McCluskey?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Wyatt?
Here.
Mrs. Andrus?
Here.
And President Wright?
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
Thank you very much. And I will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of minutes actually from two meetings from September 23rd, 2019, and from October 7th, 2019.
Second.
By Mr. Thames, second by Ms. Andrus. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, so those minutes stand approved. All right, so everybody buckle up because we've got a meeting tonight. We're going to begin first talking about board vacancies and appointments. First, we have a Ward Five Council seat nomination. We have, as I understand it, four candidates applying for that position.
Yes, sir.
Correct? And so we have to set interviews for that. I know I have a terrible week this week, and I am actually looking towards for this one for Wednesday, October 30th.
Yeah.
Are you okay with that, Jennifer?
Yeah, absolutely.
Is, can anyone else be there or attempt to be there? Okay. All right, fair enough. All right, then we will set those interviews for 5:00?
Yeah. We'll do 5:00, 5:30, 6:00, 6:30. Is that right? Is that enough time or is it?
Yes, well.
45 minutes in between each?
No, no. It'll be 30 minutes at most. Yep. We'll set those interviews 30 minutes apart, 5:00, 5:30, 6:00, and 6:30. And we'll wrap up those.
I'm just curious.
I'm going to be there. Jennifer's going to be there. Patrick is going to try to be there. You're going to try to be there. Okay, I'm sorry. Walter's going to be there.
I said originally yes, but.
So you changed your mind.
We're going to be out of town, sir.
Alex might be there. Okay, great. Great, great, great. All right, so October 30th for the Ward Five interviews. All right, next up, I'm going to just kind of run through. We've got a lot of board vacancy issues to discuss. But the first one is Board of Adjustments nominations. I'm actually going to carry that over for tonight just because we have so many other issues to deal with and we've got some more work to be done on measuring the qualifications of our applicants for that position. We have Hydra and IDB applicants. We have four candidates for these, for these two positions. I would like to try to set interviews for this one this week. I don't know if anyone is available for these. I am not. Does anyone have any time Wednesday or Thursday to potentially handle interviews with these candidates?
I could do Thursday.
Thursday? Jennifer, Thursday?
I could do Thursday, yeah.
Okay. All right, I will go ahead and set, because I think that one's been around the longest, the, those Hydra and IDB applicants, we will set those for 5:00. So 5:00 Thursday, and if we have two of you there, that would be great if we can have others. And Melody, I know you'll remind us and help us get all that on our calendars.
Yes, sir. I'll send you the invite.
All right. Great.
Even to Dr. Jones.
Well, no. Mr. Wright, is there any way, because we were, as you're going down your list, we have a Ward Three Park Board that's, we have three candidates for, and we were actually hoping to do Thursday at 5:00, so.
Okay. That is my only other one to try and set. So you're hoping to do that on Thursday?
Thursday at 5:00.
If you wanted to, I guess if you wanted to bump that, the other one?
To 6:30.
After.
All right.
That would be helpful.
Man, I would love to get both of these done.
Yeah.
Okay. So if you're with us, Melody, we're going to go ahead and try and set the Ward Three Park Board nominations, which is three candidates for one position for.
5:00, 5:30, and 6:00.
5:00, 5:30, and 6:00.
Do you need 30 minutes for all those or I'm going to try to shorten you up a little bit, but.
Well, if you want to do 15 minutes.
Let's do, well, if you've got three of them, let's do 20 minutes. We'll make it an hour. All right. So we'll do those, 5:00, 5:20, and 5:40 for Park Board for Ward Three on Thursday. We will change the Hydra IDB applicants. Now, tell you what we're going to do, we're going to try and limit those to 15 minutes. And so, and so that will begin at 6:00. For the Hydra IDB applicants, Melody?
Okay.
We'll do one at 6:00, one at 6:15, one at 6:30, and one at 6:45.
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're not done yet. All right, thank you all. Ward Two Arts Advisory, we actually, I believe, are ready to make an appointment on this one. We have one applicant. The nomination period is closed and that applicant is Amber Parsons for the Ward Two Arts Advisory nomination. Would entertain a motion for approval on this or discussion.
I move that we approve our applicant for the HAC position in Ward Two.
All right, we have a motion to approve Amber Parsons as the Ward Two Arts Advisory member, and a second by Mr. Wolverton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so Amber Parsons will be joining our Arts Advisory Committee. Yes.
Does the at-large position also?
He's still on his list. He's got a whole bunch of.
I'm getting there.
We got him, we got him already.
I'm getting there. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and skip to that one, a little bit out of order. We have an at-large Arts Advisory Committee position, and we have one applicant for that position, and that nomination period is closed as well. And that one applicant is Anna Way, and I will entertain a motion for her to be approved.
I would move to approve Anna.
By Mrs. Smith.
Second.
Second by Ms. Andrus. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so Anna Way is going to be our at-large Arts Advisory Committee.
I'll send him an email. We'll send him a letter to you, but I'll send him an email before I get home tonight.
All right, thank you, Melody. Couple other items, we're going to, we still need a Ward Four Arts Advisory Committee member. We're going to reopen this one until December 9th.
And I have somebody who's trying to.
All right, well, we're going to have some time for you. In addition, we have a Ward Three Cable Commission position opening.
Mr. President.
And we're, yeah, we're going to go ahead and keep that open until December 9th for the Cable Commission. This is for Ward Three. And two others here. We have a Ward Five Abatement Board position opening, and we did not get applicants for that position. We're going to reopen that until December 9th as well. And lastly, we have a Ward Five BZA position opening, and I believe we have some potential candidates. They have not applied yet, but because of the, I'll say, the greater urgency for that position, we're going to just keep that one open until November 18th without any objection. Yes, Ms. Andrus?
We also have two applicants for Ward Five Arts Council, so we do need to schedule appointments or interviews for that.
All right, well, we're going to have to discuss that one later.
Okay.
Okay. Is that, is that one open right now?
It closes on the 14th.
Yes, closes. Yes.
It closed when?
It closed on the 14th. We have, I have two candidates for that as well. You have?
Yes, but I have your list, so that's what I'm going on. I have your list, so that's what I'm going on.
Yes, it is closed. I guess what we need to set the interviews at some point for that one as well.
Okay, so we can't, all right, well, let's see if we can go ahead and take that up. That wasn't on my list, but, all right, Melody, just want to make sure you're keeping up.
I missed that one.
The Ward Five BZA, we're going to keep that open until November 18th, okay? And the Ward Five Arts Council. Jennifer, if you can help maybe.
It closes on the 14th, but we got two candidates. We just need to schedule interviews.
Do you have any availability next week?
Yeah, sure.
I'm not going to be able to help you other than Wednesday.
Wednesday's the biggie, so that's okay.
Yeah, Wednesday's the biggie. You want to try Tuesday or Thursday?
Yeah. Oh, you know, Tuesday, we may be at Cross Country, so what was the other option you gave me?
Well, you don't want to do Thursday. That's how it's going to be Halloween, so.
There you go.
I'll tell you what, let's push it to the next meeting. We'll set that one later, okay? Melody, we'll get on our list. We'll set that one later.
Just set it at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. That is all the board vacancy and appointment work we're going to do tonight. And I do have to add a, several items to tonight's agenda. Let me, I think we have three items to add. We have 361019, which is a request to release liens on various properties that we have in Homewood, including 1709 25th Courts South, 2635 BM Montgomery Street, 2633 BM Montgomery Street, 1614 25th Terrace South. I believe those four is what we have right now, and if there are others later, we will amend and add those later. So that's going to be 361019, referring that to committee referral, and that will go to finance. Then we also have 371019, which is a request to, a request for variance to the fence ordinance at 216 Broadway, coming to us from Leah Lorino and Greg Cobb. And we're actually going to put this in committee referral to special issues. And also, we're going to put this in other new business tonight so we can set a public hearing. Again, that's going to be 371019 in both places. And lastly, we have 381019, which is a request for the mayor to sign a contract with Shoal Engineering Company for storm pipe repair in the Brickwood Hospital area near Medical Center Drive, coming to us from Greg Cobb tonight. And we're going to put that into other new business as well. All right, and with that, I will entertain a motion for approval of the agenda as amended.
Second.
By Mr. McCluskey, second by Mr. Waltney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved as amended. All right, let's begin with our first item. I'm going to take one item out of business tonight, excuse me, out of order tonight, 201019, which is a public hearing tonight for consideration of declaring the property located at 107 Hermosa Drive a public nuisance due to violation of ordinance 1910 and 1750. That is coming to us from Scott Cook, and I have been advised by Scott Cook that that property has been cleaned up and fixed up, and he is recommending that we drop that item. Now, Mike, that was set for a public hearing. Can we drop that without opening and closing the public hearing?
Yes, sir. I think you need to open.
Okay, all right, fair enough. All right, well, I'm going to avoid any report from Scott since he's not here, and I'm going to go ahead and open tonight's public hearing on this property and ask if there's anyone here to speak in favor or against this item. And because we're about to drop it, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. We have a motion by Mr. Jones to drop 201019, and a second by Mr. McCluskey. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so 201019 is dropped. All right, next item coming up tonight is 240519, which is a public hearing set for tonight for consideration to review and amend the West Homewood District zoning, coming to us from Mr. Higginbotham and Andrew Wolverton. This came out of the Planning Commission, which gave it a favorable recommendation of five to zero at their meeting on September 3rd. And we will have a public hearing tonight, but we're going to begin first with a report, which we may have done before, but I'll ask for another report from PND on this if you have it, Mr. Thames.
Yes, sir. The committee met and voted five to zero to recommend the approval of the Planning Commission's recommendation of the amended West Homewood District zoning versus the wholesale change. These amendments were put forth by Councilman Higginbotham and the Planning Commission, excuse me. September 23rd was when we had that vote. And we also, the same day, I believe, extended the moratorium for new construction. Is that right?
We extended it to.
It's till the end of the month. I don't remember what day we did that.
Okay, to the end of this month.
To allow for the public hearing.
Yeah, either way, the PND voted without, no recommendation pending the public hearing. I'm sorry, they voted, I've confused myself. They voted favorably to refer, Councilman Higginbotham's recommended changes that were approved by the Planning Commission to full council for a public hearing.
Got it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Thames. And we're going to have that public hearing tonight. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, and I'm assuming we have several folks here who want to speak to that, or some folks who want to speak to that. Go ahead, Mr. Wolverton.
I believe, does Brian have those pictures? Yes, okay. So part of it was clarifying which properties were actually listed. So we have, we have this PDF as well as an Excel spreadsheet with each address, so that helps clarify the WHD zoning.
All right, thank you. Okay, so anyone who wishes to speak in favor or against this item, y'all come forward. Please sign in with Melody, with Melody. And as usual, I'll just ask that the comments be as brief and concise as possible, so thank you.
So I just have one comment and then a question. My comment, I also posed to the Planning Commission, which is, why do we have to have a development plan? Why do, why do these parcels in West Homewood have to be governed by development plans at all? Why, this seems to open the door to constant change, and zoning is supposed to, you know, like be a final decision, give us some stability, but, and also, each separate property being subject to a planning, a development plan seems odd because it seems like, to me, a development plan would be more appropriate for a large campus where there are going to be lots of different buildings and projects going on inside. So that's my one comment about the development plan. And my second comment about it is that it seems to also open the door to making unauthorized changes possibly to the plan without it going before the public, such as what is alleged to happen in the, in the SoHo situation. So I just, I don't know why we have to have a development plan. Why not just, just have the zoning? Have it approved and let it go? And then my other question, kind of connected with that, is will this be the final change for a while, or will we see the building department's alternative plan come back again?
All right, so I don't know if anyone is, Greg or Mr. P, if anyone's available to address any of these questions, but I have a couple of questions. Can anybody speak to those? No? Okay. All right, well, Mike, I'm going to attempt to answer your questions even though it's a public hearing, but go ahead, Mike, if you want.
One last you do.
No, please, go.
Ms. Alaby did ask that question, Planning Commission, and I'll give the same answer that I gave it Planning Commission.
Okay.
Which was, the reason it was redrawn that way was because, well, let's go back just a little bit. So the history behind these changes, they are, at least in part, in response to some deficits in the zoning plan that neighbors expressed to both myself and Mr. Wolverton about what was allowed, what kind of information we were getting about the plans once they were put forward and that sort of thing. So in this case, it is a lot of information. We are asking for a lot of specific information from them, but that was in a direct response to that complaint that I got, and that was why we wrote it, that's the way, reason I used the language that I did on that. As, as to the second question, I cannot answer that. That would be, I have, I have no intention of bringing it, but anyone can bring anything at any time, so I can't answer the second part as to whether that will come up or not come up.
But it was also, it was also discussed, and this is what we chose to move forward on, so.
Now, what I will say, Mr. James, one more thing. It would be my expectation that over the course of the next year, there may be further discussion of this district because other things came up from people who had ideas about changes. Now, whether it will be the thing Ms. Alaby referenced or something else, I can't say. I am not personally planning to originate anything.
All right, thank you. Sure, please. Further comments?
Beverly Bryce LeBeuf, 617 Edgemore Drive. I want to first of all thank Mike and Andrew for taking care of this for us. There was a lot of sentiment in the neighborhood to make this change, and I appreciate their work on it. I appreciate the Planning Commission's work on it and the PND Committee's work as well. I do realize that there are some, still some issues with it, legal type things where staff found that the code allows them to build into the right of way. So there, I think there will be future things like that that need to be taken care of, and I think we'll do those in due course and when we have plenty of time to look at it instead of 120-day moratorium, when we need to get something done. And I appreciate all the efforts to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Any further comments to speak in favor or against this item? All right, so, any other one? I'm going to close the public hearing. And Mike, I guess we will begin with first reading.
Yes, sir. This is an ordinance to amend numerous sections of the West Homewood District. I'll take them in the order that they're in the, section one, amend subsection two entitled processes. That section adds a process that requires a development plan, requires additional items and information involving current survey and legal description, proposed density of land, copy of covenants or restrictions, copy of proposed covenants or restrictions, a development schedule, comprehensive traffic analysis, fire protection plan, and any other information deemed necessary by the staff. Subsection D says the City Council may approve the plan, may disapprove the plan, may make suggested revisions to the plan, may approve the plan subject to the applicant making certain specified minor revisions, which revisions would be subject of the approval of the zoning officer. And if such revisions are approved by the zoning officer, the approval of the development plan would be final upon it being signed by the President of the City Council. An application for a development in the West Homewood District may be denied by the City Council based upon one or more of the items of information included in the development plan or any supplemental materials. The next section, property which is subject to the approved West Development Plan, applications shall be developed in compliance with the Development Plan, additional items and information approved by the city as part of the West Development, West Homewood process. Section two amends section nine entitled Urban Standards of the West Homewood District. The only change in that district simply is to delete the parcel of property that is adjacent to the intersection of Hall Avenue with Oak Grove Road. The next section amends section ten entitled Urban Standards Land Use and Permit Requirements of the West Homewood District. The modifications of that is under residential dwellings, single-family attached is deleted. Under service business, financial and professional mortuaries and funeral homes are deleted. Under industrial, light manufacturing is deleted, otherwise it stays the same. The next section modifies section A entitled Parking Requirements of section twelve entitled Urban Standards Additional Parking Requirements. The modification there is under residential requires one-point-five parking places per dwelling unit. The next section modifies section A entitled General Provisions of section fifteen entitled Public Space Standards of the West Homewood District. The modification there is delete, again, of the property adjacent to Hall Avenue and Oak Grove Road. The next section modifies the definition of multifamily in section sixteen entitled Glossary Definitions, that redefines a multifamily as a building containing two or more dwellings units above a non-residential ground level. The following multifamily building types are allowed: mixed-use multifamily dwellings, a business with a non-residential use that also contains two or more dwelling units. All of the provisions of the West Homewood District remain the same. The zoning map is amended to reflect the deletions of the parcel that were identified previously, and tonight is set as a public hearing for the discussion of this proposed ordinance.
Thank you, Mike. With that, I will entertain a motion for approval of unanimous consent. Mr. Jones, second by Mrs. Smith, and roll call vote, Melody.
Mr. Waltoney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
And President Wright?
Yes. Now, we'll entertain a motion for approval of the item twenty-four-oh-five nineteen. Second by Mr. Higginbotham, and second by Mr. Wolverton, and roll call vote, Melody.
Mr. Waltoney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
And President Wright?
Yes. And, I'm sorry, Mr. Wolverton, yes.
Just a quick point of clarification. I just wanted to know exactly how the diagram and the index list of properties will be kind of attached to that.
It's in the ordinance, now, essentially.
Well, those weren't specifically added yet, I don't believe. I mean, they were drawn, somebody in the BEZ put those together a month or so ago.
Well, the Birmingham Regional Planning Commission put these together.
Right, but it doesn't have the specific parcels actually itemized and listed out.
No, it does not.
And that's what, that's what the PDF and the Excel spreadsheet were, that were...
To be honest with you, I've never seen those before, no. The ordinance was published a long time ago.
Okay. All right.
I'm not sure I understand the questions, so maybe I can try to answer it. The parcels of property are really in dispute, are they?
Well, I think that's been a point of dispute, is that we had a number of concerned neighbors that couldn't find anything publicly that indicated which parcel specifically by tax ID or physical address or any other.
Typically, a zoning ordinance would not include parcel ID numbers or addresses. This is what's been published and what was sent to everyone involved. That's what has been approved. We want to make some changes. I'm not sure, Andrew, I mean, I'm not sure how to address that. This is the map that was originally published with a deletion of the parcel, and Mr. Higginbotham drew a circle around and said, delete.
Mr. Jackson, all our other, um, don't have individual parcel numbers.
I've never known in all my years ago. The zoning map has addresses and parcel IDs.
Can I make...
Sure.
So, I guess my observation would be this, there was a concern about that, and I know BEZ has provided an updated map from staff and has identified the parcels, so that exists. It may not be part of the ordinance, but it does exist. So, I mean, if someone has a question, it's clear now as to what they are. In my mind, it's clear, anyway.
It's clear from what the ordinance says.
What happened is, the original ordinance, when it was originally done, seven years or whatever, is exactly like it was then, nothing has changed. But the Regional Planning Commission, in their document, had one extra property on there on one of the maps. It's correct on one map, and the other map had the property next door to the Moss property, and that was all it was. But nothing has changed, all the addresses, all the PIDs, it's all exactly like it was made seven years ago, or how many it was. That's all it was.
So, it's been corrected in the ordinance that was...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Let me say this, it's not in the ordinance.
There's no addresses, a parcel ID, and any zoning ordinance.
No, we provided it all. I'm saying, we provided it all, and nothing's changed.
Well, that's certainly, you can do that administratively, and certainly should.
Yeah, because a question came up, so we provided all that information to show it never changed from the beginning. RPC made a mistake on one map, and it turned into a snowball.
Correct.
So, we fixed that.
It's corrected. Okay.
All right, and with that, we do have a unanimous ten to zero vote, and twenty-four-oh-five nineteen, that ordinance is twenty-seven-sixty-one, stands as approved, and it sounds like we're, at a minimum, you're going to have a good reference material to fully identify all the properties, whether it's included in the ordinance or not, you're going to have that reference material available. All right, next item, oh-three-oh-nine nineteen, which is a public hearing tonight for consideration of zoning setback changes, coming to us from Mr. Waltoney and Mr. Thames. And, Mr. Thames, tell me what we need to do with this one. All right, this was brought to the committee under the impression the Planning Commission had approved this, and now they have taken this back up, so I'd recommend opening, closing, and dropping. All right, so, we're going to go ahead, and since we do have a public hearing tonight on this, I'm going to go and open the public hearing, see if anybody has any comments on this, but because it's stuck in Planning Commission, this is going to have to come back through us, and we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing tonight on this item, and I'll entertain a motion, have a motion from Mr. Thames to drop, and a second by Mr. Waltoney. Any questions? Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, so, oh-three-oh-nine nineteen is dropped. Next item is oh-nine-ten nineteen, public hearing tonight for consideration of a variance to the Homewood Fence Ordinance to allow a front yard fence at two-fifty-two Allen Avenue, coming to us from Lauren Adair and Mr. Pew and Mr. Cobb with the BEZ. And we're going to begin tonight with this item with a report from Special Issues.
Yes, the committee met last week and heard from Ms. Adair. We voted four to zero to refer this item back to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. Motion made by Mr. McCluskey, and seconded by Mr. Higginbotham.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Smith, all right, so we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing on this tonight, and certainly anyone who wishes to speak in favor or against this item, if you would, please sign in your name and address with Melody, and I see a lot of folks, so I will ask that you try to keep your comments as brief and concise as possible, please. Thank you.
She's saying she shot him in the mouth.
Well, we can't have them, for the resolution to be passed, we've got to have a picture.
I've already sent it to him.
I've got to have it here sometime.
He has two of them.
Okay, well, I'll get it from him, I guess. I don't have it. I'll get it from Brian.
We need a printed copy to put with the resolution.
All right, so just please state your name and your comments, please.
Name and comment?
Yes.
Okay. Lauren Adair. Some of you were there last week, so I don't want to tell the whole thing that happened, but I do want to just say that this is what the fence looked like before. This is not a grade of before, because I didn't take before pictures. This is the one I was able to find. It was more rusted out, and these are the new, updated, the updated fence. I replaced an old rusted-out chain-link fence that was there. Apologize for my stupidity or ignorance for not knowing you couldn't replace one that was already there. I will say, like, the neighbor beside me, that the fence does divide us, we're both single females, and she believes it adds security to us. Right after it was put up, I have on my Ring camera someone walking through the front yards of the people across the streets, front yards, and I travel eighty percent for work, and I just really do feel like that my new fence brings security and adds value and curb appeal to the property. I got every neighbor on the street, except for one, to sign a petition saying that they believed that as well. I have neighbors here to also vouch for me that they believe that it adds curb appeal value and security to the street as well. I have a neighbor that is here that may want to speak, that his car was stolen out of his driveway, and there have been a lot of break-ins in our cars, and they, either on the streets or even in your driveways, they'll just get into your cars if they're unlocked or if not, so I just feel like it adds security.
All right, I'll just mention one thing, because it may prelude some of these comments too, and I appreciate your comments and you coming here, and certainly open it to other council members to discuss as well, but just from a standpoint of a variance to the ordinance and speaking to adding, you know, value or curb appeal, that's going to be a tough issue, I would think, for this council to consider with regard to, you know, fences everywhere around the city could do that. I do take to heart your issue about security, and I will ask, you know, if you could maybe elaborate on how that makes it more secure, and that putting up this, I guess it's really a different type of fence.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can you elaborate on that?
The security feel, I mean, it divides the front yards, and like I said, in my Ring camera, in my security camera, not long after the fence was put in, I have someone walking through the front yards of the other people, and they walked, but they never came into our front yards and never walked across our front yards. It was someone random, two o'clock in the morning, and I just feel like with the security, it's going to, people are going to see a barrier, and if they're walking through and breaking into cars like they have been recently, that's going to be something that's going to get in their way. They're not going to get, go anywhere that's going to keep them from getting away faster.
Thank you. I don't know if anyone else has any other questions while the homeowner is up.
Well, I...
Ms. Smith?
I will just say, you know, I completely understand and feel for you that you didn't know that that, but we do have a process for a reason, and we have an ordinance against front yard fences, and we have a lot of homeowners who go through the process like, as they should, and sometimes don't get their variances approved. In fact, we've had a lot. The majority actually don't get approved, because there's an ordinance preventing them for a reason. And, you know, I'm sorry that you didn't understand, you know, you weren't aware of what the process was, but that doesn't prevent the fact that other people go through the process correctly, still don't get their variances approved, so it makes it hard for us to justify very, you know, granting a variance to someone who didn't go through the process and just put the fence up anyway.
And I completely understand that. I hired a contractor, I'm a first-time homeowner, never done this before. I've always thought it was a fence, I was just replacing something that was already there, and I thought that the contractor, I mean, if that's something that maybe they should have told me, I should have, they should have had a permit, I didn't. I think I'm hiring the right people, and then I get a letter in the mail, and I travel, like I said, eighty percent for work, so...
No, most of the contractors who do regular work in Homewood know that, A, you have to have a permit, and they also know that you can't do a front yard fence. And taking down an existing fence, because the fact is, the ordinance didn't always exist, so when that person put in that chain-link fence, it was probably completely justified. But once you take down an existing fence that was grandfathered in because it was put in before the ordinance existed, that no longer, that grandfather situation no longer exists, because you're putting in something new, and you're now violating the ordinance that exists.
I understand that. I just ask for you to think about it, and I do believe it adds value, not value, security, I apologize, and it makes me feel safer when I'm traveling for work.
All right, thank you. Any further comments or questions, and we'll certainly go hear from the others. All right, thank you very much. Next up?
Clarification on taking down a fence versus repairing a fence?
Can you state your name and address?
My name is Michael Eadie, I live at one-thirty-three Gillan Drive.
Okay, thank you.
So, is there a difference in taking down and repairing?
Yes.
Yes, there is a very big difference.
Okay.
If you completely remove something, yes, there's a difference.
Not to get, like, technical or whatever, but if she had left one metal post on her existing chain-link fence and replaced everything else, would it have fallen under the same rules?
No, I mean, you can't say you repaired something if you take out the entire fence and leave one metal hole left, not repairing, that's...
Yeah.
If she had replaced it with, you know, she had replaced the parts that were rusted out, left the chain-link fence as it was?
Yeah.
Probably would have been fine.
Okay. The only comment I have is just as a resident, like, we do, like, we tend to have more break-ins and things like that. Security is an issue. We got a lot of young families in our neighborhood, and yes, I mean, less entry into your yard definitely prevents people from coming into it, and that's, you know, for a single mom, and we're all good friends, and obviously try to help take care and look after each other or whatnot, but that's the biggest issue for us, is, you know, I mean, obviously it does add curb appeal, and it, you know, it'd be nice to have more wooden fences and less chain-link fences, but, like, just seems like sometimes common sense has to win, but...
Well, again, if she had replaced the fence and taken the fence not all the way out to the curb, basically you have to keep the fence to the sides of your houses. It can't come out, it can't project out into the front of the house. So, she could have replaced the fence, and it just not have gone out as far, and it would have been fine.
Yeah.
And that's why there's a permit process and a variance process for that.
All right, thank you. Next up?
Peyton Duncan, two-three-seven Allen Avenue. I live three houses down from Lauren. I'll be brief. Two things come to mind for me. I was the guy that got his car stolen, and so, to keep that and have that more of a hindrance for that is one thing that I would reiterate. Also, we value children in Homewood in a high regard, and I have three young children, and I believe the fence, compared to what was there, is much safer, and also keeps my kids probably out of Lauren's yard, which she may not want all the time. But I think security's huge in this, and to ask her to remove it, I just think is unreasonable.
Thank you. Any others?
Emily Bell, eight-one-seven Grove Street. I've been a homeowner of that property since two thousand thirteen. I've been a homeowner of that property since 2013. Probably lived in the neighborhood longer than any of my neighbors right here. I've owned the home since I was in pharmacy school. As a pharmacy student in the neighborhood, I believe that fence provided extreme security and safety to me. Now I'm married and have a husband who protects me, but I believe the fence is a valuable addition to the neighborhood, and I ask that you give Lauren a little grace here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
They're just here.
Okay, certainly. And appreciate you being here, and I certainly, I think we all understand the sentiment of your support. All right, any other comments for or against this? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I will turn it over first if there's any comments or discussion from the council. Ms. McCluskey?
I have one, Mr. President. And Ms. Adair, you were at the meeting last week when I had my discussion, and I think Mrs. Smith kind of reiterated some of the things that I talked about during the committee yesterday, or, excuse me, last week. And it, Mr. Cobb, Mr. White, do we know for a fact that there was no permit pulled for this?
No, sir.
There was no permit pulled? Okay, so coming before to get a permit, our department would have told your contractor that they couldn't do this, that they wouldn't be able to do this without a variance. You know, that's, you might have a conversation with your contractor. I mean, to know, you know, most people know that before they build anything within any city, not just Homewood, that they're probably going to need a permit for those things, so...
I didn't just hire any contractor.
Sure.
I hired Lowe's, thinking that's a big corporation, they know what they're doing. They're going to, apparently, they contract out and get random contractors that don't know the city ordinances.
Sure.
And I thought I was going through a big corporation, they were going to do the right things. Like I said, I'm a first-time homeowner, I didn't know, so...
So, and again, that was something that we discussed last week during the committee meeting. So you know that I can't vote for this, and of course, you've got the will of the rest of the people that are up here. But that's just, you know, looking at it in the simple fact that we have to be cognizant of everybody else. So imagine if every house on your street had a fence that went all the way down to the street, just like yours does now. That's something that we have to take a look at, you know, setting a precedent and whatnot. And that's why Mrs. Smith brought up the fact that in, I can't tell you how many years, I mean, people, again, go through the process, and, you know, we've, we just, we just don't do that typically.
I understand that. And my house is, that is the only fence on the street. There's, and I just ask that you use the argument that it was an existing fence, it was already grandfathered in, and I replaced something that made it better and more secure that was there. No one, anybody else coming in asking you, there was, there's no other front yard fences on my street, on our dead-end street leading to the school, and mine's the only one. And so if anybody comes in, they don't already have an existing fence that's already grandfathered in.
All right, any further comments? Mr. Higginbotham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have thought a lot about this since you came in. I have found it a very difficult issue, and I'll explain why I find it a difficult issue, other than the fact that it's happened to be in my word, which makes it a difficult issue. My difficulty being, a lot of times when we have people come before us for variances, they have already done something that they shouldn't have done, and they're asking for a variance after the fact. But in many cases, it's pretty clear that they knew that they shouldn't have done it before they did it, and they did it anyway. That is part of my struggle here, because obviously, you did not know that you could not do this. I am not here to say that the fence is not an improvement on a chain-link fence, because clearly, it's an improvement on a chain-link fence. It's a very nice fence. But as several of my colleagues have said, the reality is, our ordinance does not allow for front yard fences. It puts me in an awkward position, because I certainly don't want to vote against someone who thought they were doing the right thing, but at the same time, we have to uphold the ordinance as we have. And you said nobody else in your street wants a fence, but may or may not be true.
Nobody in my street has a front yard fence.
Has a front yard fence, right. But the precedent we set here isn't just going to be for Allen, it's going to be for the entire city. And we've been pretty consistent, as some people have already pointed out, in our opposition to front yard fences. The few exceptions I can think, since I've been on the council, I can't speak about what happened before I got here, have been for people who had children with different learning disabilities and challenges, that they put small little fences, right, just a few feet from their door to keep them from running out in the street. These weren't even big fences. So I suspect, you know, I know when you leave here or not, if the council votes against you on this issue, you're going to be mad at us, and that's fine, you can be mad at us. I think the person you need to be mad at is your contractor. You hired a contractor, and I think it wasn't unreasonable to think that they would do the right thing, but clearly, they did not. And that's who I would be talking to about this problem, if I had to take down part of my fence. But we haven't voted yet, I don't know how the rest of the council will vote, but from my perspective, I can't, as much as I want to, support it, because there's not, there's no hardship here. There's no hardship as to why the fence has to be there. It was something you did, and I don't think you did it on purpose to violate the rules, obviously, but it would set a precedent if we were to allow it. I really, honestly, if it were me, I'm just saying, if it were me, I would be going back to talk to the contractor about what they did, and if there were costs associated with taking down the fence, if this body decides to say that you can't keep it, you know, I'd be talking to them about doing that and not paying additional costs.
I mean, I definitely can't. I've already, since I moved in a little over two years ago, I've put in about $20,000 to improve the outside of my house. I haven't even put in anything on the inside of my house and replaced my original 1952 flooring or anything like that, because I wanted to improve the outside of my house. And that's what I've done. I've put $20,000 into it. I don't have the money, and I've saved that up, and I've done a little bit at a time. I don't have the money to pay somebody right now to tear it down. And like I said, I'm leaving tonight to drive to Georgia, four hours after we leave here for work, and I'm gone the next two weeks for work, so I definitely, I never would have done this. I'm such a rule follower, I never would have done this and tried to get away with it. I hired the people that I thought were going to take care of me. I mean, two different contractors I've hired with my windows or anything else, I've had to have them come back out. So I do understand where you're coming from. Everybody's going to want it, but I just ask that, you know, as people on my street and neighbors that are here, and myself, and, you know, single females that live on the street, who do believe that it adds security, I do, I mean, I just believe that there should be something in that it was already there, and I just made it better. And I even brought it back further away from the street than it already was, so...
Can I, I'm just going to make one more quick comment.
Yes, Ms. Smith, please.
I just wanted to, I was looking at my agenda tonight in my committee, because my special issues is my committee, and that's where the fence variances come. There's three more front yard fence variances that are in my committee for next week. We can't, it's hard...
Are they already existing fences, or did they just put them up?
No, but it's hard for us to say, well, we let you do it. Well, she already did it, but we let you do it, because there is an ordinance against front yard fences. Whether it was there or not, you took the fence out and replaced it, so it was no longer grandfathered in. That didn't exist anymore. And then these other people who do go through the process correctly, who are coming to ask for a front yard fence, and we say, no, you can't have it, but you granted hers. And it's a very, it's a hard to, it's hard for us as a body, because we're not just dealing with one situation at a time, we're dealing with an entire city of situations.
It's not the same. The fence has been there. Like, someone coming and asking for a new fence is not the same. The precedent is that the fence has existed for 50 years.
Counsel, right. Is the public hearing still open?
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
It is, okay.
But in this case, it doesn't, because the fence was taken down. The fence that was allowed was the fence that was there. So the new fence was not ever allowed because it was not permitted, and it was against the ordinance. And I, there's no other way to explain it other than that. The fence that was existing was grandfathered in, because it had been there before the ordinance existed. But once that fence came out, that fence no longer existed, and the new fence was a violation of the ordinance. And that's just, I don't know, a simpler way to put it, that's just what it is.
And I do understand that violation of the ordinance, and I do apologize for that. That's why I'm here, asking for you to, you know, think about what it does add.
And again, I do, I'm with Mr. Higginbotham. I don't think any of this was because you did anything purposefully. I don't at all. I think, again, I think Mr. Higginbotham is right. I think you should probably go back to Lowe's and have a conversation with them about the fact that they didn't do anything that they were supposed to do through the process.
All right, well, we're going to move on. I'm going to just say one comment, not to belabor this, but just so I can, I may be the minority on this, and I certainly understand that. I can find a basis of security interest here. And I just say that, I may be the lone vote here, I don't know exactly how the sentiment's going to go, but given that there was a pre-existing fence and taking that down and evidence of people traveling across the property and even evidence of theft of property in the area, but I just wanted to say that, just so there's another school of thought out there, and I know you all will permit me that. So with that, and I apologize, Mr. Waltney, we did close the public hearing, and so you were correct, yeah, Mr. Kendrick.
Can I ask one question? Who is your contractor?
Lowe's.
No, no, Lowe's.
No, sir.
Who'd you write your check to?
Somebody they hired.
I paid Lowe's, that's, I paid Lowe's and made the contractor.
Could you provide the building inspection department the name of that contractor?
I could, I'd have to go back and...
Okay, I think they'd be interested in getting that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, that may be helpful. All right, no further comments. I will entertain a motion for consideration.
I'd move to approve.
One second.
I have a motion for approval by Mrs. Smith and a second by Ms. Andrus. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you roll call?
Any opposed?
Nay.
Can you cut a roll call?
All right, we'll do a roll call vote, Ms. Salter.
Okay. Mr. Waltney?
No.
Mr. Tynes?
No.
Mr. Higginbotham?
No.
Mr. Wolverton?
No abstain.
Abstain.
Abstain. Mr. McCluskey?
No.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mrs. Smith?
No.
Mr. Wyatt?
No.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes. All right, so that item fails by a vote of seven to two.
Seven to...
One abstention. All right, so thank you all. Moving on to the next item, which is going to be 191019, which is a public hearing tonight for consideration to declare property located at 105 Hermosa Drive a public nuisance due to violation of ordinances 19 and 1750. And without objection, I had communication with Scott Cook, we're going to carry over that item. Excuse me, I take that back. We have a public hearing on this. So we're going to, we're going to go ahead and open this public hearing on this, and we will consider carrying over any further action on it. So with that, we will open the public hearing on 191019 and see if there's anyone here to speak in favor of or against this item. Please come forward and, I'm sorry, I'm glad you're here, and sign in with Ms. Salter, and we'll look forward to your comments. Yes, please.
I'm Kathy Tollis. That is my mother's house at 105 Hermosa Drive. I was brought home from St. Vincent's Hospital to that house as a baby. I lived there most of my life. In 1995, my husband and I were lucky enough to buy the house directly behind Number Nine Pomona, so we raised our son, telling him, don't let the gate hit you on the way to grandma's house. Well, unfortunately, my mother has since passed away. The last few years have been rough in my family. My husband has Lyme disease. He's completely disabled. I have to look after him 24/7. And in the last three or four years, I had breast cancer. So I've been under an extraordinary hardship, and I've tried to clean the lot up as best I could. I've got pictures of that. I think my friend that came with me, we're both master gardeners, so it's not like we don't know about such things. I hired somebody to do the cleanup work, and I was under the impression that I had done enough. Apparently, I couldn't find any rules or guidelines or standards in the city code that would explain to me exactly how to do this. So I did the best I could, and I'm still surprised that it wasn't cleaned up enough. But having been a Homewood patriot all my life, my son was a tuba player in the band, I was a Boy Scout leader, I am determined to do whatever it takes to get this property up to whatever standard it needs to be. I've already hired somebody to do some more clearing in the backyard. It's amazing, when you're sick for a few years, how Mother Nature can go a little crazy. So I do think the front yard was completely as cleared as I could. That picture is actually the first one my friend Mary took, that one.
And I think it looked better.
The shrubbery looks better there because it had vines on it, you know? And then I got somebody else to come in and take the vines off. Those shrubberies were about 12-foot-tall hollies that I had somebody else come down and cut down about four months prior, or last spring, really. And he was supposed to come back and didn't. And I've had the lawn mowed the whole time. I've had somebody regularly doing that, but he doesn't like to trim shrubbery, so it's one of those situations. What I need to know is, what do I need to do?
Well, I'll tell you what, Ms. Tollis, our enforcement officer has been out of town, but he did get some communication on this property that with the effort you're doing, and I can't speak for all the council, but I would think that's very well-received and very favorable. And I think, given that our enforcement officer has recommended that we carry over this item, I think that's a very favorable sign, that he views that it's probably close to getting to where it needs to be. I don't want to speak too much for him, his name is Scott Cook, but I would dare say, by what you have reported to the council tonight, that that is very well-received. And I think this council is going to be of a mindset to work with you to get probably, what I would view, without being Scott Cook, the enforcement officer on it, probably just a little bit more work on the property, and I got a feeling that...
If I can just get some direction, I will...
And I think Scott Cook will reach out to you and will make sure of that.
Excuse me, there's one little problem, too. On to the right of my mother's house, there's a huge amount of overgrowth that actually belongs to the house next door, so I can't really, I'm not at liberty to trim that.
Got you.
But he probably doesn't know that, because it looks like it's on our property, but it's on 103.
Okay.
It's, you know...
Yeah, okay. Well, what I would advise you is to look out for communications from Scott. I'm sure he's going to follow up with you. I'll be following up with him, and our staff will follow in tonight's meeting, and I got a feeling that you'll find yourself in compliance in short order.
Thank you. I will work at it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anything else? Okay.
I think you should stop pitching over, because I think it looks great.
That's a master gardener's pitch, isn't it?
Duly...
I'm going to go by their credit card.
Duly noted, okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in favor or against this item? Seeing no one, we're going to close the public hearing. And council members, following communications with Scott, he did recommend that we carry this over, so without objection, we're going to carry over 191019, and perhaps by next council meeting, we'll be able to drop this. All right, next item is 241019, which is a public hearing tonight for consideration of a variance to assigned ordinance at 1280 Columbiana Road.
Skip one.
4310.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
107.
Oh, my mistake. All right, thank you. Oh, my mistake. All right. Thank you. 2310-19, public hearing tonight for consideration of a variance to assigned ordinance at 2610 19th Street South, coming to us from Megan Ellis and Greg Cobb. And we'll begin on this item with a report from special issues. Ms. Smith?
Yes. Committee met last week, heard from Megan Ellis, and voted four to zero to furthest item back out to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. Motion made by Mr. McCloskey and seconded by Mr. Waltney.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. And I'm going to go ahead and just open the public hearing. And we can begin...Is this Ms. Ellis?
Yes.
And tell us what we have here tonight.
We have assigned variance for an extra sign. We have the Therapy South sign on the front elevation, and on the side elevation, the Physical Therapy sign. Both of them are 40 square foot each, and they both are on...it's on a corner lot, so it faces two road lanes.
And this, just for a point of clarification, this is the old Gauntlet Fitness Building that it is. It's on a corner lot with...next to the entrance to 280 and whatever that street is that runs in front of it, 19th Street, whatever. So it is...it's a corner lot. And both the sizes...both the signs, the additional sign and the permitted sign, are both under our size limit for attached signs.
Okay. Do we have any renderings? I don't know if we have any. I keep looking for Brian to pop them up. He may not have any, but...
Thank you.
I'm assuming not.
We have one.
If you want.
Just pass it around. It's fine.
All right. See that?
I thought you did. I thought I copied you.
You did.
Oh, there we go.
There you are.
No.
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 Okay.
I swear I printed it.
The one that says Therapy South is the front elevation.
That's the additional sign?
The additional sign is the Physical Therapy sign.
Oh, this is the additional one. Okay. The Physical Therapy.
That's on the side.
Got that on the side. Okay. I'll pass it on down. Sorry. For the informal treatment of the sign, we just pass it down.
Sorry about that. I should have made copies.
Well, we thought we were going to have it in screen.
Yes.
Evidently, it didn't go through, because Ms. Salter sent it and copied me. It just didn't work.
We're going to manage, though. It usually gets handled. I think we understand, but if I want to make sure, I think I can probably go ahead and close the public hearing. Anyone else here to speak in favor or against this item? Seeing no one else, I will go ahead and close the public hearing, and we will leave it to council comments and review of this item.
I'd move to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Mrs. Smith and a second from Mr. Jones. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right. So that's going to be a eight to two vote.
Okay.
That stands approved. This is...
Higginbotham.
Higginbotham and Wolverton, I believe.
Yes, sir.
Those are...
I grabbed two.
Is that Resolution 19-183?
Yes, sir.
That first one?
183.
All right. So variance is approved. Next item, 2410-19, public hearing tonight for consideration of variance to assigned ordinance at 1280 Columbiana Road, coming to us from Steve Kirkpatrick and Greg Cobb. And we'll begin with this item with a report from special issues.
Yes. Met last week and heard from Mr. Kirkpatrick. We voted four to zero to further this item back to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. Motion made by Mr. Waltney, seconded by Councilor McCloskey.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Smith. And we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing, and we'll begin...I don't know, Mr. Cobb, if you want to sum this up, or...I don't know if this is Mrs. Kirkpatrick.
Sorry.
Whichever one of you wants to...What kind of variance do we have for this?
This is a size variance. This was brought up at committee meeting last week. It's an 80 square foot sign. What's allowed is 50. This property sits approximately 100 feet off of the road from Greensprings. It's just a matter of sight distance issue with that and some of the vegetation that's out there that shows up in the top overhead view.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is the sign already existing?
No.
No.
Okay. So it's just one sign for size variance off of...is that Greensprings there?
Columbiana. It's Columbiana.
Which is Columbiana there?
Oklahoma.
Oh, Columbiana. All right. One second. Any further comments?
He's doing it the right way. He's asking for permission, not for forgiveness.
Got you. Okay. Anyone else here to speak in favor or against this item? Seeing no one, we're going to close the public hearing and turn over comments from Councilman Wolverton.
Is there some sort of nephrology sign already existing out there? Because I feel like I've driven past that building and seen it.
There was. They had the suite on the far west end of the building, and when they were acquired by Azura Kidney Care, they took a bigger space in the majority of the remainder of the building to the east. So there was a sign
So they've moved...
but there's not a sign there now.
It's the same business, just moving...
It's an acquired business, same business, keeping the same name, but adding the logo and tagline of the acquirer, Azura.
Okay. Any further comments or questions?
Is there a...excuse me, Mr. Brit.
Sure, please.
Is there a pillar sign in the beginning, like when you pull into the property, that tells...
Monument.
Excuse me. Thank you. Monument sign that tells you
Nothing I'm aware of.
who's in there. Okay.
And this one is a bit off the road, and it's got a bunch of...really, it's got a bunch of...it's a tough sign situation. You've got a lot of trees and so forth in front of your building, so...
It's mostly for the people that are in the parking lot.
Yeah. Okay. Questions, comments? Entertained a motion?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Ms. Andrus, a second by Mrs. Smith. Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right. So I believe...
Brit's not here.
Brit's not here. I believe that stands approved six to three with...
Seven to two, I think.
Seven to two.
Same two people that voted.
I'm sorry. I thought all three of you did. Did you not vote? Did you vote in person?
I voted against.
Yes.
I voted against.
You said it's three. Did you vote against it?
No.
Okay. Excuse me. Seven to two in favor of it. Mr. Taines is not present for the vote. So sign stands approved, and that's going to be...
Did he just leave or did he...
He just stepped out for just a second. That's going to be Resolution 19-184. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Believe it or not, we have another public hearing tonight. Item 1010-19 is a public hearing tonight for reconsideration.
It's not tonight.
November 4.
I know. I have to read it, though. Variance to the Homewood Fence Ordinance to Allow a Front Yard Fence at 1604 Roseland Drive, coming to us from Caroline Hammonds and Mrs. Smith. And yes, we are going to carry that one over till November 4 at 6:00 p.m. Also have 1110-19, which is a public hearing set for November 4 for consideration to rezone property of 105 Vulcan Road to a...
It's not very much.
From a C3 to a mixed-use district, coming to us from applicant Brad Castro, who's the owner of J.P. Byrne, for the purpose to permit the property, the use of an existing building as a church and office for both nonprofit and for-profit organization. That's coming to us from Wyatt Tew. And again, that will be carried over a public hearing on November 4. 1210-19, which is a public hearing that's going to be set for December 9 for consideration of a downtown district zoning, coming to us from Mr. Kendrick, our city attorney. And we're going to, again, have that public hearing on December 9. 1810-19, which is a request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with the Operation School Bill and fund their fiscal year 1920 budget preparation in the city budget, coming to us from J.J. Bischoff and our city clerk, Melody. And let's see. Where are we on this?
We did get a contract to Mr. Kendrick, and he just made a couple of changes. So if y'all would approve it with...since he made a couple of changes to the contract.
Mike, you're satisfied with the contract?
Yes, sir.
Move to approve.
We have a motion for approval by Mrs. Smith, seconded by Mr. Wyatt. Any discussion? All in favor? Excuse me. Excuse me. Yes, Mr. Jones?
I was just wondering what... Wasn't under new business. I mean, this is...we're under...
Because it was under new business last council meeting, but we didn't have the contract, so we carried it over.
Oh, we didn't have the contract. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any further questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So that contract for the mayor to sign is approved, based on Mike's approval of the contract. Next item is 0110-19, which is a request for consideration of declaring the following vehicle surplus. This came to us with a 2010 Ford Crown Victoria. I'm not going to read the VIN numbers. And a Whitco pressure washer that was purchased in 2000.
Actually, came to him with two vehicles.
I'm reading...I'm sorry. This came to us based on the 2010 Ford Crown Victoria and a 2001 Crown Victoria. However, I guess it was Mr. James, we believe we can get some more use out of the 2001 Crown Victoria. So we have actually taken that off of the vehicle surplus and have added, which you see there on the agenda, a pressure washer to be declared surplus. So, Mike, I don't know if I can, from the floor, just amend that, or if I need to amend it, or...
Well, it's an ordinance. I have to read it, and then you can...
Well, Finance, I mean, has a report.
Yes. I just wanted to make sure we knew what it was.
Well, yeah. We clarified it.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. And then let me begin with...I should...could have saved myself a lot of heartache.
Well, yeah, you...
Let me begin with the report from Finance.
Yeah, you summarized it very well. So the Finance Committee met, voted four to zero to do that, to remove...approve the change to remove the 2001 and add the Whitco and then the pressure washer. So four to zero is a recommendation out of Finance.
And thank you, Mr. Jones. I did not know that was done in committee. So I'm glad it was. And so with that, I guess we will begin with first reading.
Send an ordinance to declare certain property and equipment surplus. Hereby established and declared, the following property of the City of Homewood Fleet Department is no longer needed for public and municipal purpose. One is Whitco 5030 DPO pressure washer and a 2010 Ford Crown Vic, last serial number 39175. Section two, the mayor is to be authorized and directed to dispose of the 2010 Crown Victoria by auction to the highest bidder and to trade the Whitco pressure washer in for a new equipment.
Thank you, Mike. And I'll entertain a motion for unanimous consent
Submove.
by Mr. McCloskey, seconded by Mr. Higginbotham, and roll call vote, Melody.
Mr. Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Taines?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
And President Wright?
Yes. And I will entertain a motion for approval of the item
Submove.
by Mr. McCloskey, seconded by Mrs. Smith, and another roll call vote, Melody.
Mr. Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Taines?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
And President Wright?
Yes. And so that's going to be ordinance 2762, approved on a 10 to 0 vote. Next item, 0210-19, request for consideration of an update from Daniel Communities, coming to us from Councilor Britt Taines. And we will begin with this item with a report from Finance Committee.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met and voted four to zero to recommend accepting the report by Doug Neal.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We will accept the report presented at committee. Next item, 0410-19, request for consideration to install additional lighting at Oak Grove Road between Hall Avenue and Patriot Park. This came to us from David Walker and Mark Driscoll and Councilor Andrew Wolverton. And I believe we actually have two reports on this item, and we'll begin with the first report from Public Safety. Mr. McCloskey.
Yes. Committee met and voted four to zero to recommend approval. Motion was made by Councilor Taines, seconded by Councilor Wyatt.
And we also have a report from Finance on 0410-19. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, the committee voted four to zero to recommend approval. It's $259.62 each from line item 0422550220, the seven cent gas tax pending the recommendation of public safety. So that happened. So four to zero.
All right. Thank you for that. And I don't have to get both committees approved, do I, Mike?
No, sir.
All right. So with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That stands approved. I believe it's Resolution 19-185.
I think it's 186, Operation School Bill.
186, yes.
Excuse me. 186. Thank you. Next item, 2008-19, request for consideration of a traffic calming policy from Britt Taines. And we'll begin on this item with a report from Public Safety. Mr. McCloskey.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. The committee met and voted four to zero after a long meeting, or meetings, I guess, consecutive meetings. But again, they voted four to zero to recommend the approval. Vote was made by Councilor Taines...motion was made by Councilor Taines, seconded by Councilor Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. McCloskey. And coming out of committee, a favorable motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So that will stand approved, 10 to 0, and that will be Resolution 19-187. Yes, Mr. Wolverton?
Quick point of clarification. Do we get anything actually back on that? Oh, the appendix, yes. And I'm sorry. I sent it to Council McCloskey. I neglected to email it to everyone.
Yeah, I needed to go to the resolution.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. 0510-19, request for consideration to install a stop sign at the intersection of Oxford Lane and Saxon Drive, coming to us from Councilor Mike Higginbotham. And we will begin on this item with a report from Public Safety as well. Mr. McCloskey.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee met and voted four to zero to recommend approval. Motion was made by Councilor Wyatt, seconded by Councilor Wolverton.
Thank you, sir. And I believe we have an ordinance here. So, Mike, we'll have first reading.
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance to regulate traffic in the City of Homewood. We don't aim as follows. Every person, firm, or corporation operating a motor vehicle is defined in the Highway Code. In an eastly direction on Oxford Lane, it says, "Sees you cause a motor vehicle to come to police stop intersection of Oxford Lane with the westly line of Saxon Drive." Section two, no person, firm, or corporation shall park within 30 feet of intersection of Saxon Drive with Oxford Lane. Section three, a violation of this ordinance shall constitute a misdemeanor and any person found guilty shall be punished as provided by ordinance section 1-8 of the Code of Ordinances. Section four, the chief of police shall erect...cause to be erect markings or signs as described in above. And section five, that the provisions of ordinance become effective, be upon adoption by the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. And I'll entertain a motion for unanimous consent
Submove.
by Mr. McCloskey.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Andrus, and roll call vote, Melody.
Mr. Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Taines?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
And President Wright?
Yes. And so that stands approved by a vote of 10 to 0, and I have it as ordinance number 2763.
Yes, sir.
All right. Next item, 0810-19, which is a request for consideration for the city to vacate land between 904 Highland Road and 909 Irving Road. Without objection, we're going to go ahead and carry that item over tonight.
Thank you.
Because I think there's several items left to be done on that item before we're ready for consideration of it. Next item, 1209-19, which is a request for consideration to consider options to improve resident participation in the 2020 census. This came to our committee from Sherri Nielsen, our city clerk. And we'll begin on this item with a report from Special Issues. I believe, Mrs. Smith?
Yes. We heard a presentation from Ms. Nielsen, who is in charge of the census. She is wanting to improve Homewood's participation in the 2020 census. Our participation rate in 2010 was 74%, which we learned was not very good. I thought 74% was good, but not so much.
It's a C.
It is a C. So we are creating a community member committee who are going to try to come up with ideas and ways to address increasing our census participation. Ms. Andrus and I are organizing it, and we are currently trying to gather our members. So we are doing that as we speak. So the recommendation was to create the committee. The motion to create the committee was made by Mr. McCloskey and seconded by Mr. Waltney, and approved four to zero in the Special Issues Committee.
Special Issues. Okay. And thank you, Mrs. Smith and Mrs. Andrus, for taking on the helm of that committee, and best of luck to it. And so with that, I will take that as a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. President, that was my question. I should do a resolution, because that was the start of resolution.
Not a resolution. Okay. All right. So just a vote for approval.
Community, community.
All right. Well, nonetheless, you two ladies have the resounding support of city council behind you. Okay. All right. Next, we get to our committee referral agenda, which has been amended, so I will entertain a motion for approval of it.
Submove.
Seconded by Mr. Higginbotham, seconded by Mr. Waltney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The committee referral agenda is approved as amended, which All right, the committee referral agenda is approved as amended, which gets us to other new business. 321019, request to set a public hearing for consideration of a variance to the Homewood Fence Ordinance at 107 Lucerne Boulevard. We're going to set this for public hearing for November 4th at 6:00 PM. Next item, 331019, which is a request for a public hearing and referral to the Special Issues Committee for consideration of a variance to the Homewood Fence Ordinance to allow a front yard fence at 832 Acton Avenue. We're going to set that for public hearing also on November 4th. 341019, which is a request to set a public hearing and referral to the Special Issues Committee for consideration, consideration of a variance to the sign ordinance at 2614 Eighteenth Street South, coming to us from Jack Kidd and Mr. Cobb, and we're going to set that one for public hearing for November 4th as well. And 351019, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of October 8th, 2019 through October 21st, 2019. As I understand, Mr. Jones, you had the honors.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the vouchers were answered by Mr. Burgett, so I would move for approval of the vouchers.
Second.
All right, have motion for approval from Mr. Jones, this second by Mr. Thames. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And those vouchers stand approved, and that will be, lost more resolution numbers here.
188.
188, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, next item is, which was amended to tonight's agenda, 371019, which has already been placed on our committee referral, but we're going to need to set a public hearing for a variance to the Fence Ordinance at 216 Broadway, coming to us from Leah Loreno and Mr. Cobb, and we're going to set this public hearing for November 4th, 2019, without any objection. Last item, 381019, which is a request for the mayor to sign a contract with Shoal Engineering Company for storm pipe repair in the Brookwood Hospital area near Medical Center Drive, and this was added to tonight's agenda by Mr. Cobb, and Mr. Cobb, if you can speak to this item for us.
Yes, sir, this is an item we put into the budget for this fiscal year. We've had very brief discussion on it, but we have some pipe up on Medical Center Drive, right from, that's between the hospital and...
Mount Royal.
Mount Royal, and that, we've already placed some of a year or so back, that is corrugated metal and it's deteriorated, and I'd like to get it fixed as quickly as possible, so that we don't have a road failure like we did when you referred to the roller coaster.
And how much is this, this item's already budgeted? I don't know.
It's already budgeted, yes, sir, for the construction, but this is for a contract for Shoal to design on it.
Okay, all right. All right, I'll entertain a motion for approval. Second by Mr. Waltney, second by Mr. McCloskey. Any questions or discussion? All, Mr. Thames?
What's the cost of that?
You already want me to say? No.
Yeah.
Yes, they allow.
Now you have to, now you have to.
You mean for the design or for the construction?
No, the Finance Chair just told me no.
The design, I recall.
Oh, the cost of the design, I'll tell you, okay, that's good, I just don't want to...
I recall the budget for...
Okay, okay, I don't like to put those numbers out before we take a bid. The contract for design is $30,350, and it's another $2,500 if they do inspections. If all things work out, I'll do that myself, you know, hopefully I can do that myself.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's a very much needed project, thank you.
All right, any further questions? We've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that is approved 10 to 0, and I guess that will be Resolution 189?
Yes, sir.
All right, all right, that brings us to the end of our lengthy agenda. Mr. Mayor, with that snappy bow tie, you're not going to, you're not going to grace us?
No.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, Mr. Waltney?
It does not appear I have anything for Public Works, so still not getting to set it ahead. I'm ready, chomping at the bit. I eagerly await Melody's email each Wednesday, looking for that agenda. We'll get one.
We haven't carried over it yet.
We have that one item, but I don't believe we're ready for it yet. It's the Underground Utility Ordinance, we're still discussing.
You know, we, you know, we can't wait, so...
Should we go and schedule it just in case? We will save the trouble this time.
Thank you, Mr. Waltney. Mr. Thames?
Well, I have one...
Oh, I'm so sorry, I thought you were going to...
Yeah, I won't be long-winded, I promise. I just wanted to mention, we had the, enjoyed seeing all of, many of your faces at the Spring Park ribbon cutting and opening up. That's, if you haven't had a chance, swing by and check that park out, it is impressive. What, and thanks to Berkeley and what his teams have done, thank you for the support from the mayor and J.J. It's a beautiful park. The following day, Britt and I had Rosedale Day of Service out there, and we got out and cut, I think, 15-plus yards, interface with the neighbors, and cleaned up a whole lot of random things we normally haven't touched over there, just to kind of, you know, spruce up the neighborhood, but it was received well by the residents, and we didn't get to break in that grill over there, we had to bring our own, but we'll get it next time, so, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Waltney. Mr. Thames?
Just reiterate the thanks to the mayor and J.J., and the thanks for the funding from the council for Spring Park, it really turned out beautiful. Those of y'all that were there for the ribbon cutting saw it. I wish I could get my grass to look like that, in a drought. It's gorgeous. Mr. Jones, you, 30 minutes?
I've got 30.
So, I'll set P and D for 5:30 on, was it the 28th, is that right? What's the...
We have council getting them forward.
28th, right, okay.
Based on Mr. Waltney's plans, that may be the last time you get 5:30, so...
I know, I know, I feel like I should set it for an hour, but probably only need 15 minutes. So, that is it, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thames. Mr. Hickinbotham?
Mr. Chairman, all I would say is I thank my colleagues for their vote tonight on the West Homewood District, and I will leave it at that, and hope everyone has a great evening.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wolverton?
Would like to second, second Mr. Hickinbotham's, you know, photo confidence from you guys on, on making those changes, and I think it will be extremely helpful in, in kind of creating what, what I think most have envisioned that area to be. And apologize for not being able to make it over to Spring Park, work having tied up, but I will make it out there soon, yes. And then just excited about the connector that is almost completed, there's a couple of lights up, I believe, now, and just a little bit of fencing left. Have gotten a lot of comments and people that are, you know, thankful that it, thankful that it's there and already using it on a daily basis, so thank you guys for, for your help in getting that done as well.
All righty, thank you, sir. Mr. McCloskey?
Yes. So, I will do, you, 15 minutes, you said, Britt? Yep. Okay, so I'll do Public Safety at 5:45, and Ms. Smith, I think I only need 15 minutes as well, yeah, so, just based off of, I don't think there's anything controversial going on, so I would like to congratulate the Homewood Middle School Cross Country Team, they were Metro Champs again for the boys, and the girls came in second to Mountain Brook, unfortunately, but we were missing our top runner, who has a, several stress fractures in her leg and shin, and, I mean, just all over the place.
That didn't stop Arthur Langley, but whatever.
No, it did, it did not, it did not, so, but that's, that's pretty incredible, that's now, how many years in a row?
Three for the boys.
Three for the boys. So, the, we're, we're growing the runners young now and sending them on up to the, to the high school. The Hall Camp Fall Festival, that is November 2nd, correct, Mr. Hickinbotham? Isn't that right, November 2nd?
I believe that is correct.
Yeah, November 2nd, so everybody, that's, that's always a, a really good time, that festival's been going on for a very long time, so if you get a chance, grab your kids and family, go over there and enjoy some wonderful food and games and rides and everything. And I think that's it, although I am going to leave here and I'm going to hop on my Whitco pressure washer.
Just drive it right there.
No, you're not, because that's been surplus, so...
We'll fix it right in.
Better hurry up. Mr. Jones?
Finance at 5, and congratulations to the band for the Rose Bowl announcement, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Smith?
I will take 6 o'clock, and I'm just going to have a never-ending meeting, because nobody comes after me anymore, so I can just go for hours.
I know who you're kidding.
And, and the Arts Council hosted their Pickin' in the Park and Handmade Art Festival yesterday. I was unable to attend, because I was flying back from Miami, but we drove past there on the way home from the airport, and it looked like a great crowd, and Diane Lightsey said that they had a really good turnout, and had a lot of good comments from people, so that's a great event, and the Arts Council's doing good work.
Great, great. Mr. Wyatt?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Andrews?
Well, I will pick up where the middle school...
Everybody stole your thunder.
Well, nothing tonight, no, I'm kidding, you know I got plenty, you know I got a list. The high school, I have to mention the high school boys cross-country team and girls cross-country team. We went over to Atlanta a week ago Saturday, so last year we went to this meet in, outside of Noonan, Georgia, and everybody came away, just the varsity went, and everybody came away with just crazy PRs, and so we took the whole team this year, and Vestavia came and Scottsboro came, because they saw how fast we ran, so they went with us. So we entered this big metro Atlanta meet, seated number 7th. We had four boys break 16 minutes for the first time in school history. We had the lowest score in school history, and we finished our top runner, Crawford Hope, finished fourth. John Fielding finished eighth or ninth? Eighth. Anyway, everybody just absolutely ran lights out, and we won the meet. So we came in seated 7th, big metro Atlanta, Vestavia was there, Scottsboro was there, four boys broke 16 minutes, and we won the meet. And the girls were the first Alabama girls team to win, or to finish, I know that, but just tons of PRs, it was great. And then last, this past weekend, we also won the Hewitt Husky, Hewitt Trustful Husky Meet Challenge, thank you, and the girls came in second, again, that's a same, same results as last year, so congratulations to all the coaches, all the runners, so great. You may have noticed, if you were on the Lake Shore Trail today, we have started taking down the invasive species, so that has started today, so if you hear from any of your constituents that there are teams of people with machetes on the trail... It is...
You know, I must...
True, good timing.
I must say, I love the term invasive species, it sounds like, I mean, giant bugs or something coming in, but assuming it's all the weeds and everything, so...
We had a fabulous meeting with Berkeley, and thank him so much, he is just like, you're starting Monday, I mean, it was great. First of all, we came in under budget, which is amazing, Sanford is putting up $9,000, the school board's putting up $7,500, we are going to have to take down about 12 trees, because we've lost them to the invasive species. But anyway, if you see Mark Thomas on the trail and his team out there, you know, certainly say hi and thank him for the work he's doing, it's going to be great. And then finally, I can't believe word one did not mention, our recycling competition is about to kick off, so...
We figured you would need somebody to help out.
Exactly, and then I want to mention that, no, I'm kidding, we will be kicking that off, we will send y'all more information, but this will be an intercity competition to reduce our contamination rate with recycling, and look for a press conference, I'll invite all of you to the press conference.
Ward versus Ward?
No, this is cities versus cities, that's right, Mountain Brook, Vestavia, Birmingham, Hoover.
That's not going to be nearly as much fun, but...
Oh, that's going to be great, what's the, what's the prize? We get to choose our charity?
Yeah, we choose, the winning city chooses a, a charity for the other cities to donate to.
Nice. Well, we all have a percentage, it's a reduction in percentage, I mean, it's going to be...
Of contamination.
Yes, of contamination, that's right, we're, we're trying to reduce our contamination rates, and what that actually is doing is increasing the amount of usable product that they receive, so, and saving us money.
Mr. President, I forgot to make one other announcement, I wanted to introduce everybody to their newest constituent, this is Hank.
So Hank can vote? This, I like, I mean...
I'm going to make it to where Hank can vote. I was going to do this last council meeting, but I hadn't slept in about two days because of Hank, but Hank now sleeps through the night and is doing well.
So are you.
Yeah, I'm doing much better.
And you're, and you're getting there.
He christened Spring Park last week, so...